Ready. She's a little demanding.
Get it, I get it.
Okay, alright.
Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Tuesday, January 31st, 2023, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in city council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings presiding. Also present are Commissioners Most Uncle Slate Camp, Amelia Boyd, Ben McGrand, and Grant Simmons. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
My pledge is that we do comply with the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, with regard to God, and to his people, and to each other, for all.
Thank you. I would like to make a quick announcement that there are listening devices available. If there's anyone here in attendance who would like one? If so, let city staff know. And I would also like to welcome Mr. Grant Simmons to the commission as this is his first meeting. Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is this where he's supposed to give us a 15-minute bio?
Yeah.
Okay.
He made Ben do it.
Right, sure.
Are there any other general announcements from any commissioners?
I'd just like to also welcome Grant. Nice to have you with us.
Thank you, thank you.
Any general announcements from city staff?
I would just like to let the commission know that you're not, you're meeting next week, which is your first meeting in but February, yeah, February 7th, will be a training. So Fonda will be here. She is remote this evening, but she will be here and will be doing our annual planning and zoning commissioner training.
Cool. Thank you. Moving on, the next agenda item is approval of the minutes. And before I entertain the motion to approve those, I'm going to direct to city staff. I understand there is a correction we need to make.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is not a correction that you need to make. What came to our attention when we were transcribing the minutes was the motion, the sample motion sheets that you had before you had the wrong addresses. They were missing a one in front of the number. So it was 805, 815, 915 in consultation. But clearly, the notices, the agenda, what was announced at the beginning of the meeting and all the materials referencing the application were correct. So in consultation with legal counsel, we corrected the minutes to have the correct addresses in the motion to approve.
Earlier in the meeting, all those addresses were correct. It was only in the sample motions.
Correct.
So we're good to proceed with. Anybody have any questions or concerns on that?
No.
Okay. Then I would accept the motion to approve those minutes. Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alrighty, motion passes. Next item is to look at the survey results on the comprehensive plan and housing plan, and I will turn it over to city staff for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this was a follow-up survey after the workshops, just based on low attendance. Part of the reason we did the workshop was just the content of the material we felt would be better understood in a workshop environment and that the survey it would just be more challenging to present the information in the survey, but we did go ahead and do so. So that ran for three weeks, and I will just kind of summarize the results that we received.
Can I ask how we, how the respondents were collected? Was it just sort of open form? Like, what was the workshop itself? Who was surveyed, I guess, is the question.
Oh, the, the survey or the, the workshop was in October, and that was an in-person workshop. We did one here at City Hall and one remotely. And we only had about, between the two, we had about 35 people show up. So the survey was put on the city website. It's through, it's the survey that tool that the city uses. So it was announced on the city website. It was connected on the Facebook and then through press releases. So it, I think it was in the reader and the me both, that there was an article and I believe city administrator and manager were on the radio as well, trying to promote it. So that's how we got the word out. So the survey had 236 visitors, but 176 responses. And what that means is people will often respond and then they want to go back and see how the responses are coming. So they go back again. But they are only able to answer one time. But it's just, people are just curious what other people are answering. So in terms of where the respondents live, you'll see the number of responses. This question was only 61 people. So the majority were from Area 5, which is right in the middle of the city. 14 each from Areas 4 and 9. So both at all predominantly residential areas. Area 8, 10.9%, 4.7% from Area 7, and 3%, 3% from 3 and 6, which is a lot of commercial area. And then 18% actually were outside of the city resident or outside residents. And then on the question of relationship with the city, 78% said they lived within the city.
Question on that. Do those percentages mirror or similar ratios to the percentage of where our population lives? I mean, do we find 28% of standpoint residents in Area 5?
That is a good question. I don't have an answer for you.
I think it's 2% overall in terms of respondents, right? So it's going to be spotty somewhere.
Right, yeah. But I was just curious. Yep. And I can see why 3 would be low.
Yeah.
You know, there's not as much residential up there and things like that, but I was. Okay, thank you. Continue.
The question, there are a series of questions on accessory dwelling units. One is, do you support current regulations? And then there was general information and a link to the actual code. 27 people responded, which was 42.9% of the people answering the question supported current. And then the same number supported incentives to encourage further accessory dwelling units. Generally, the support was for incentives for law, only if they provide long-term housing. And then those who supported changes to our regulations gave a list of potential changes. The general categories of those were if they had more architectural control, then increase, some wanted to increase or remove bedroom restrictions altogether. Require parking that's accessible year-round, don't require parking. So there were numerous comments in both directions, parking, whether they felt that ADUs exacerbate the on-street parking problem, or they feel like requiring parking is a disincentive to building them. And then suggested to change the size limit based on the size of the lots, and then not to require sidewalk construction with construction of an ADU. Then there was what's called a visual preference survey, and these were just images put up and asked because we talked about the need for infill housing. Whether this was a type of infill housing, they would support or not. And I just put in here both what the workshop responses were at the survey. Because they were, for some of them, they were rather different. But you can see that the workshop responses, there were much fewer people. That upper left one, overall, not highly supported. What you don't get from visual preference surveys is what exactly it is people are honing in on. So at this point, we don't know if it's architectural style, the height, what it is, but overall, that's not a look people are liking. Lower left is one that is in town. Workshop was very supportive of and much less so of the survey respondents. Still predominantly supported, but much closer. Upper left, very supportive at the workshop and overall, I would say the responses on the survey were in general, less supportive of infill period. So that's where I think you're getting these closer splits. And then lower left is also an existing one that got support from both workshop and survey respondents. Upper left, overall, has strong support. And lower left is of the flip between workshop and survey. And again, is it height? Is it, there were comments that, you know, this image, you have garages running the street, and that's not something we our code necessarily encourages. But overall, gives you some idea of the direction for infill housing. So then we had some open-ended questions that we got a lot of responses. So just try to summarize them here. What would improve your neighborhood? These are the most common responses. There were 56 separate responses. Some of them went, you know, name numerous things. But generally, it's sidewalk multimodal paths either improved, more of them, better connected or better maintained. Road improvements, traffic calming, quiet railroad crossing, and alleys came up quite a bit. Parks and green space took up to accommodate growth. Trees and tree-lined streets came up quite a bit. Protect neighborhood character. And suggestions were design guidelines, larger setbacks, reduced height. Infrastructure improvements. Both comments on water and stormwater infrastructure, less street parking, and more attention to alleys.
Question on that. Are they in, are those in any order? In terms of frequency that that, or they're just kind of random? Thank you.
But I would say sidewalks, multimodal probably was the most common response.
Thank you.
And what do you like best about your neighborhood? It was interesting how many times quiet came up. Quiet, low-density, single-family character, diverse, unique character, mix of old and new. Open space, large lots, sidewalks, parks, tree-lined streets, and proximity to downtown and recreation. So some of the things people want to improve are also the things that they like. So again, we had, the commission had reviewed a draft of Chapter 5 Housing in Neighborhoods in December. So what I'll do is take these results, make sure that nothing in the chat, you know, if there's something that needs to get added to the chapter based on the comments or something we completely missed, we'll make those changes, bring that back, as well as the community character and design, because I think a lot of the comments are in that direction. So that's the summary of the survey. Do you have any questions?
Christian's comments. Was there any more detail on alleys?
Well, what I'll do, I'll get you the full full survey responses.
You may, you may have already sent that.
I may.
I think I saw.
I think in the staff report, I gave you some of it, but I don't know that I sent it all. Some of it was, you know, if you're gonna allow infill development, alleys need to be accessible year-round for parking. Some of it was just, they need to be, they need to be maintained. That was the gist of the comments.
Is maintaining city alleys, I mean, maintaining alleys in the city, is that considered a city responsibility, or is it a homeowner responsibility?
The city does not maintain alleys.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought.
Right. Currently.
And they don't enforce homeowners maintaining them in any way either, correct? Yeah.
The Wild West. Yeah.
We do, you know, sometimes when people are doing ADUs or building houses, they will want to pave part of an alley. And so we just encourage them to work, work with their neighbors, but then we also have to make sure it's done correctly.
Utilities.
And yeah, utility.
So Amy, just a clarification on, on the report that was sent out, the staff report on the percent of responses. That's not showing what was favorable. The actual, the response count is what we need to look at. So like, for example, I was a little confused. The, there is a, there is a majority support for smaller lot sizes based off of the responses. 261 people responded yes to support that versus no was only 29.
Right. That was close. That was a closer one. I didn't put that one. And that was in the staff report, I believe.
Right.
Yeah.
I was just, I was looking at it.
One of those, I know I had a typo on, and I'm gonna have to see. Let me.
Yeah, percentage wise, it's pretty bad.
Well, that's, I'm confused unless that's the typo you refer.
Yeah. Yeah, because we said we had 176 responses.
Correct. And that was me trying to. So yeah, if you look at page, well, here, I won't share it.
Must be 26 instead of 261.
So these are the percentages, but on this one, the smaller lots, this 261 is not right. It's 226.
It's 26.
26, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. Which would make the percentages make.
That makes sense.
That makes sense. Much.
But yeah, no, in that case, the majority was do not.
They do not.
Do not support.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, sample size pretty small, 29.
Correct.
But, but that is the feedback we received.
Amy, would, would there be maybe a thought of to publish these numbers as a, as a way to maybe get some more response? Like reactionary response? Because I personally, I'd love to see a lot more respondents.
Right.
I don't, I don't know if the numbers are really that far off from what, you know, if everybody answered, but I don't know. I guess, I guess we don't want to hold up the show too long either.
Let me ask you a question along the same lines. When we look at those number of responses, I, I think Councilman Welker got more responses to his Facebook post than any of this.
Yeah.
So it'd be interesting. I mean, what, what would be the legitimacy to that if, if we put, hey, we just learned that whatever, the 42% or whatever, I don't remember what it was without seeing it here, but supported or did did not support smaller lot sizes. What do you all think? And just put it out like that and see what we get from those people. I'm just curious if there's legitimacy to that or not.
Survey for the survey?
We'll just say, we, we learned this from a survey of people who responded. But I'd like to hear from more people before we go ahead and make any decisions on this sort of thing. And I don't know.
Well, yeah, I mean, to me, it just seems like a lot of this pretty split. Like, there's not an overwhelming majority either way.
Either way.
Obviously, no, if it directs us in any direction.
Correct.
Right. And I don't think I would have people reacting to a survey. I mean, we could certainly put out the results of this is what we've got. You know, we are working on the complaint. If you feel strongly about this, you know.
Comment.
You know, here's my email. You can always submit comments.
But yeah, but the other side of it is if you had a strong feeling, you should have participated in the survey, and maybe they did.
They're the same people that showed up at the workshop.
Yeah.
That could well be, that could well be, quite honestly.
Or one, so surveys are very tricky because depending on how they're worded, how they're, how the questions are asked, you can come up with the results that you want based on what you think your constituents or whoever's going to answer the survey. Like, for instance, do you want smaller lots? No. Do you want affordable housing? Yes. So you've answered, you know, and that, so I overwhelmingly, we've heard that it's affordable housing is the, the big push, which, you know, you know, what's our role in that? Smaller lots or higher, or higher density lots, higher density zoning. So which, which is it going to be? Is it all of it or part of it? So that's my, I don't know if the survey really helps, in my opinion. I don't, I don't think it sways my opinion very much because my neighbors probably don't understand what it's all about, really. And then there's some people that don't want smaller lots, and they don't want their neighborhood to change at all. And frankly, they probably don't want affordable housing when it comes down to it. Or if they do, it better be on the other side of town or in a different area. So I don't know. The, I think we could draw more of a conclusion from like the multimodal stuff and like, how do you want the area to look? Those probably have more weight for me than lot sizes and, you know, how big can an ADU be? Because that's probably at the end of the day, that, that looked like that was more important to people, you know, tree-lined streets and stuff like that and access. And and do people really know the difference between 4,000 feet and 5,000 feet from the street? I don't think they do. Or some of these, some of these places look like they could be 20 units or they could be four units. So that's my two cents.
Well, it is. And when we were doing the workshop, we tried to explain to people on the questionnaire that a lot of the questions we're trying to get at beyond the comprehensive plan. Because the comprehensive plan is setting out these broad policies, goals. But when we get into the code, that's when we're going to say, okay, if we really want affordable housing, these are the things we're going to need to do. So it quite likely will come back with more of this, but it was trying to get people thinking a little more concretely of how it affects them without, you know, we know if it, if they know it's in their backyard, they're going to react. But if it's just a generic question, how are they going to respond to it?
So maybe having this responses fairly split is a good thing. Because if somebody, if we had one question that was 92%, then that's probably something we want to steer away from or steer for.
Right.
Okay, I can follow that.
Another interesting observation, I think, is that everything on the pictures, everything that was two-story got strong support, and everything that was three-story was more split. Some of it was not supported at all, and some of it had moderate support. But two-story seemed to be supported and three stories did not.
Which is.
Right. And back to your question, when, I mean, it's, it's a tool for engagement, but what is it they're honing in on? It could be the.
Could be the one has beautiful landscaping and the other one doesn't.
Right, right. So without, you know.
We don't.
Like about this.
Yeah.
I think you are right when they are commenting on scale. Very much so likely, probably for these ones.
Yeah.
Amy, could you put up the map of the percentages of where people lived? Please, yes. Was there, for the workshop, was there, was that question asked of those people where they lived? I'm curious what the numbers were.
I'm trying to remember. I think, I think it was just, are you a city resident or non-city resident is what we asked. I don't think we we did this map. We always ask this question with surveys, you know.
I was just curious because it gives you an idea of who, from what areas coming to the actual workshops, and maybe we're missing targeting, you know, a neighborhood, or I don't know. I just, it was just a curiosity.
Yeah. No, I don't believe we did ask. I don't think we used the map for ask. It was just, are you a city resident or not?
Yeah.
It, and that's a good point. It might be interesting in the future to look at workshops, having one at Washington Elementary and one at Farm and Stidrow Elementary instead of here.
Right.
See what, I don't know. I don't know if it'd be different, but that might be a way to engage more people.
More community involvement, because that's what we want.
Right.
We get, so we have a clear picture of what the, the residents want.
Right.
In the middle of the winter is also pretty tough.
October.
Yeah.
It's a rare. The winter is.
Well, just colder weather is tougher to get people to do anything at all, even surveys online, I think. They're busy sleeping.
Would be a bad time.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, middle of summer.
Well, the live one was October, which is probably about as good as it gets.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
There's probably a formula consensus or a number that they use as like at the 80 percentile, which might be really tough to get as consensus that, you know, would not be questioned by other, by citizens.
And again, will this kind of thing will come up as we're working on the code, but just wanted to let people know, you know, we all know we need housing, we need affordable housing, but what does, what can the city do to accomplish that? And dealing with issues in the zoning code is one of one of the very few things that we can do. So that's where those questions are trying to get at.
I, I'd say good job pulling a survey together because it's always a pain in the butt to do, right? It just is. I mean, if you build it, they won't come. You got to market the thing, right? So.
And it's not anonymous.
Yeah, it's not, yeah. And so you've got real sample in here, even though it's, you know, only 2, 2 and 1/2% or so. There is separation in like the, the support of ADUs generally, right? That would be definitely outside the margin of error in terms of of support versus not. So I think we could probably take that one away. And then when it came to the, the infill forms, you're exactly right. I hadn't snapped to that. It's everything that was three stories is generally, yeah, right, negative. But there's, there's separation in those as well in terms of support. So I think there are some nuggets we can take out of here. It would be nice to have proportional representation by the zones. It, you know, how do you get there? Having it in both schools is sort of interesting. But I, I, I think there's some good stuff in here for sure.
Any other questions, comments? I think none will move on. The next item on the agenda this evening is a review of the land use and growth chapter, including a draft of the future land use map. And I will again yield the floor to City Planner Amy Twetton for an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we also have Miriam McGilvery on as well from Logan Simpson. And I guess first, just didn't make a whole lot of changes to the draft chapter, but just kind of wanted to review the few changes that I did based on the discussion at the last meeting. And one that, the one was the change of the land use categories specifically for residential.
Amy, would you like me to share my screen? I've got it open if you'd like. Yep, okay. Yep, okay.
So, uh, the land use categories, it had been single-family, mixed residential, high dense. High-density residential, um, so then we had the discussion of the confusion with zoning. And realistically, it made more sense to talk about the density in the land use than calling it just single-family. Because the single-family districts do allow ADUs, they do allow duplex, at least currently. Um, so that was um, a change and then. There was wording about new structures complimenting or being harmonious with existing residents and just change that to um. Respecting the scale and character of the existing built environment with regard to size, mass and architecture. Um, so tho- those were one, and then I also added text. From the Leland Report on Growth and the need to make sure we have. Uh, land uses for. Um, commercial and industrial. Um, and then just based on the growth rate of two-point-four percent, annual growth rate of two-point-four percent. What does that mean ten years out? What does that mean twenty years out? Again, because this is the growth chapter, so making sure we are noting that. Uh, was just another change, uh, but I think other than that, and then just, I think there was one. Uh, goal or objective added related to, uh, I think I pulled it right over the economic development chapter, which was. Um, ensure an adequate supply of appropriately zoned land for a diversified mix. Of commercial and industrial uses to maintain a diverse economy.
Can, can we dig into that one a little bit more like? Wh- what's, what's the metrics to support that? What's the, what's the ideal mix of land, right? Like, I've seen a lot of studies that have said that. Uh, cities that have ha- hung on to industrial land for a long time with the thought of. Eventually somebody's going to need it, they eventually never happens, and so then they convert that into some sort of. Residential type development, and I know we went through that with the land out there by the airport. Uh, with this thought that they need to keep it industrial for the future needs. Uh, but we continue to know that there's a future, there is a need now for affordable housing. And, and so I guess I, I question like. Where do we get that mix or that need for that mix? I think theoretically, theoretically, like it makes sense to say that, but in reality, what is the right mix? And do we need that mix here in Sandpoint?
Well, I think that's what the Leland Report was trying to address. Um, and the challenge, I think, with commercial and industrial users. Is they tend to need large pieces of land, so you don't wanna start dividing it up and having unusable, so you need. A larger quantity, because I think if you look at the Leland Report, it says we have a. I don't remember how many years supply of industrial land currently. But you get one user and they're going to take up a big chunk of it, not, you know, they have much bigger needs than. A residential development can fit in a smaller size.
So, so I would actually challenge that because I think that you can fit a lot of people into a. Into an acre of land for a uh, industrial space, like if you take one of the employers like uh, Dahar, right? Like, they've got by two, three hundred people that work in that facility, right? And how much space does that facility really take up? So if you look at the amount of land that we have available in industrial. That's probably tens of thousands of jobs. And would we really have those tens of thousands of jobs needed in that amount of space? Right, so I think that per acre, you can fit more people in an industrial space. And these vast amounts of space that we have for industrial, do we really need that much industrial space?
No, I totally follow what you're saying. But with all the projects. In motion right now. The ones that we understand to be, maybe they've gone through approval process here, met final approval and city council, and some that we don't even see. Um, but what's that number on affordable type housing or workforce housing right now with everything that's in plan?
I, I don't think that there's any that's really classified as affordable, I mean, there's the Culvers Crossing, which is an attempt at it. But it's not truly affordable perpetual. There is a response in the Leland uh, report about community land trusts. Which is a perpetual affordability scenario. But if you look at long-term, we're in, on Boyer there, I mean, those homes are seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
And even the ones in Culvers are probably gonna be upwards of five hundred thousand dollars, right?
I mean, so there's only a portion of those that would, you know, apply for.
It's a drop in the bucket of what is really needed. If you look at the median income. In Bonner County of seventy-five thousand dollars for a household, that's really a three-hundred-plus-thousand-dollar home affordable. Right, so, I, I'm just, I, I'm, I'm hung up on this kind of like, we need to preserve industrial land. For the future need, when we know that today's need is for affordable housing.
But when you look at the map, you see the percentage of designated heavy commercial industrial, you've got a large percentage in the inner critical zone. And what you have outside, outlying, I mean, that's really a smaller percentage compared to, you know. The rest of the city.
Yeah, but I, I don't, I don't think that there's that true, I mean, you know, if, if that land has set vacant for that long for industrial. The reality, in, especially in the state of Idaho. I mean, I've seen the studies that show manufacturing in, in the state of Idaho is a decreasing industry. So I just, I would question that uh, need to continue to preserve industrial space for the future.
I, I, I see your point, but I also see the argument toward, you know, we, we are in a great little. Slice of, you know. Heaven here with the mountain, the lake, and to entice. Industry or, you know, bigger, larger commercial, we would have to have the land for that, that enticement, you know, we're not gonna bring in those. Those type of companies.
It's a give and take, right? If you don't have a place for people to live at an affordable rate, why would I bring my company there instead of shop? Because the cost of what I'm gonna have to pay those people is so much higher than if I could just take it to the south or.
You know, we do have a few of those apartment complexes that are. Been approved and going in along the Boyer corridor, corridor, um, which will help in that. I mean, there's what, a hundred and seven just, just approved, I mean, there was, there's hundreds of.
Yeah, but we don't know what the, what the market rate is gonna be for those, that rent.
Right. Right.
Is it gonna be something that an employee working at. McDuff's is going to be able to afford?
I don't think that the color runs all the way out into towards uh, Woodland Drive or whatever that road is across there. Um, and in the heavy commercial industrial. That blends all the old red zone of industrial business park in with it, correct?
I'm not sure, I'm following the question.
So, there used to be industrial general and the red zone was industrial business IBP.
That's purple down here. Well, that's. Uh, this, again, this is not zoning, this is future land use. So you're asking about zoning districts?
Well. Future land use categories in this um, new version. We used to have gray for industrial general and red for industrial business park.
I know you would character areas in the previous. The current comp plan uses the character areas, there was character area was industrial, then we had character area five. And four, so this is the current land use map, but not the zoning map.
You had context areas.
Sorry, Fonda?
Oh, you said character areas, they're familiar with them as context.
I'm sorry, I, context, context areas. But I think Slate, what you're asking about is the zoning just current zoning districts.
Yes, I think I am.
Okay.
Okay. Because I'm seeing a different color here now, so.
Here. But your question being. On Woodlands.
Well, between Woodland and. Baldi.
Yeah.
Um, primarily gray for industrial general. So you're saying this color doesn't matter?
That is the color land use, but you are correct, current zoning is also industrial for that area.
Okay. The Boyer Business Park. In here is gray. So all I'm saying is, in the, if this was, if this was last week, let's say, it'd be red. For that context area, um, industrial business park.
So this is the current context areas. So along. So between Woodland and Baldi, it is. The current context area is industrial.
In context four.
Context area four uh, is shown at the corners of. Mountain View and Boyer. But one of those was zoned out of that. That's where Boyer Meadows subdivision is, and that, the northwest corner of that intersection. Uh, was rezoned to single-family residential.
Okay.
But along Baldi, you're saying south of Baldi, that is showing is context area four. And. Uh, we are showing it as the future use as heavy commercial industrial.
Are we good to move forward?
Oh, I have a comment.
Go for it.
So I. The industrial or the, let's say the, the gray area here, heavy commercial industrial. I'm a supporter of it being maintained, um. And for a few reasons, one is the airport is a unique, um. I mean, if you go out in the county, there are other airports, but ours is uh. Doing pretty well as far as the economic driver for the, for the area. Um, but more importantly, I think when, when you get out of city limits, industrial. Heavy industrial, um, even like. Commercial, a lot of the stuff that we have in, in the city limits is not allowed in the county. Because of it being next to residential areas or the zoning minimums like, uh. You know, ten acre minimums or twenty acre minimums or, you know, ag timber does not allow you to do. Quite a few things. It does allow you to do some things, but in a very small fashion.
And the infrastructure's not there.
Yeah, and you don't have the, the sewer water, you know, sometimes not even the power available. Um, so I definitely, I definitely hear that. It would be great to have more area, which. You know, to the west, when we talked about at the last meeting, you know, maybe we do need more, more area in the city. Um, that's about the only area we can move towards. Um, and. If, and I think this came up last year with the, um, the proposal to have that one piece, you know, become a. Housing, you know, for, for somebody local, um. And originally, just my thoughts on it, originally I was in favor of it because I was on the, you know, yeah, we need more space for more, more units. But then I, hearing the argument that we do have a pretty limited amount of space for, you know, this um, industrial use. And the airport. From my knowledge of the airport, it's, it could be like on the edge of like a lot of expansion or a lot more activity. Like the whole area, like our population could grow quite a bit, so if we're looking at like just housing in this, um. You know, this comp plan focused, then I think we're missing on, on the opportunity that. The airport and other things that happen out around the airport, um, are important to. Having that space, um, the cities near us like Dover, I'm not sure Dover has, Dover does have a little bit of space for this kind of use, but. Um, proximity to, you know, just access and stuff like that, Kootenay has a little bit, Pondry has a little bit, but. And maybe we have a higher percentage, I know the gray area does look pretty big, but we have a big airport right in the middle of it. And a lot of that is runway, a lot of that is not ever gonna be anything but a runway. Um, the percentage of that that is runway is. Gotta be ten percent, fifteen percent.
Yeah, it, and it's an interesting point you raise because, um, what. You know, as I indicated, in this future land use map, we have created this public quasi-public land use that doesn't occur currently. Um, in reality, if we applied quasi-public. Um, or public quasi-public to the airport and did the, there would be a big blue. Big section of that gray area would actually be blue.
Well, and, and it, it probably should be, because that's, it's never gonna be anything else.
Right, so, yeah, that's.
We.
Do a, a version showing that as well.
Yeah, I think that, that's beneficial, because it's, because you, you can't, you can't ever build anything in there.
Right.
So there's no point in even making that. You know.
The definition.
Right.
Yeah.
And we also.
Confuses people.
We also had an application in the uh, lateral safety, well, I guess it was really close to uh, intercritical too, but. That did not go through because it was housing in the zone that.
Right.
You know, the, the public showed was not as supportive of it, so. Some of that area, even if we really wanted it to push it for housing, it, it just may not ever get there. So the use kind of fits, I mean, there's, there is a lot of, I mean, my argument was, there's already a lot of that happening in that zone anyway. But I think the, the public spoke pretty clear that we have enough and that's, that's all we're gonna support is what we have now.
So how, how, how did the Silver Wings get approved then to be residential inside that zone?
That's a long story, but it was an approved PUD. It had been approved as a PUD, correct? Um, but Mr. Chairman, if, if I could, um, maybe back up and just kind of walk you through. Um, this map and kind of what the, some of the changes are, and then there are some very. Specific areas, we kind of talk about study areas because we. I think their question, they're really questions that the commission kind of needs to tackle.
Okay.
Um, and then come back. So again, we moved away from context areas to land use categories. Um, and. Overall, at the north, uh, you know, starting from the north, um. The land use categories very much reflect the current. Um, comprehensive plan context areas, the one area in the nor. One area of question we have is this one little remaining bit on Schweitzer Cut Off. Um, you'll, that's the area zoned for the um, mini storage that was rezoned to industrial. That parcel is currently zoned residential, but it is in the inner critical zone. Um, it is divided into, I believe, three. Um, it is divided into, I believe, three lots. So should someone. Want to build there um and meet the current zoning and don't, and doesn't need a conditional use permit, they can go ahead and do that. So we weren't sure whether we should just keep it as residential, given the lot sizes there, or should, should the future land use? Based on it being in the inner critical zone. Uh, indicate that to be future and. Heavy commercial industrial. So.
I mean, my, my thought would be that, yeah, if somebody. Were to change the use, then they would. It shouldn't match the surrounding area. It, it should not be a residence.
Should not be residential.
Can you show us with your cursor where that is again?
Just, I'm trying to contextualize it.
Schweitzer cutoff.
There's right there at the top of the hill as you. Okay.
There's homes there right now, or there's.
Yeah, what's the?
There's a couple homes there, and I think at least one or two of the lots are for sale. Um. You know, the, the one is probably big enough, you could do three units on it. Uh, and as long as they didn't need. Any special approvals, they could do that. And the airport bought that property just to the east of. There. So it's currently zoned. Residential, but. The airport owns it and. It's gonna be airport purposes.
It's gonna be airport what?
It, it'll just be uh part of the runway.
Part of the runway.
Yep. Or not part of the runway, but just that. They're just protecting property around the. End of the runway there. Um, so that's, we don't have to resolve that now. Um. But then going, so moving south.
Quick question on that before we move on. I mean, I, I think. From my perspective, the overall objective would be to maintain the functionality of the airport and its ability to continue to get funding. And any kind of, of residential that would go in there would um conflict with that goal. The other side of it is if it's already zoned residential. I don't think it'd be our position. To change that uh without a whole lot of legal advice as to, as to. What, what, how would that proceed if that? Were to be something, but the overall objective, I think, is to protect the integrity of the airport. I don't know if others.
But if we were to, if we were to change the zoning of it, it's not necessarily impacting the existing. Residents, it's just that if somebody.
Just impacts the owner.
Particularly if they're for sale already.
If they, if they decided to change it. Sell it and to build a new house, and they're like, okay, well now you can't build a new house because the zoning doesn't support that. But if you just wanna sell it and live there as residents, you wanna have planes flying over your house all day long, then. More power to you.
Well, and the airport can make a move to change its own.
They don't own that piece.
They don't own that piece. They bought part of it, not all of it.
So, so it is true.
Well, the piece of Dale.
Pardon?
The piece that the airport owns.
Right.
They can, they can make their own move to change it.
They could, right. And we're showing it as future industrial, which is what. They would likely change it to an industrial district.
How many, how many houses are up there now?
I think there's two.
There's more structures than homes too. There's like shops and. It's a treat area, so. I mean, we just approved uh. Uh, we just approved something just. Right to the south of that. Like in the last two months.
The condo, the, the big toys condo project?
No, the um.
You're further to the west.
Right.
And then further to the west.
And then to the west. In that yellow area that is in the inner critical zone, we approved a subdivision. And there's one currently being. Built on. Right on the intersection of the inner critical and the lateral safety zone. As well, so. I mean, it remaining as it is until like. Uh, other commissioners said, you know. If they wanna change it, then really they're limited to just changing it to, you know, the heavy commercial industrial or, or something along those lines. That makes sense to me, I think.
Right, but I think to John's point is. Should the future land use be industrial? If, if people are using it as residential now, they can continue using it as residential, but if they ever wanted to change. It would have to be consistent with the land use. Um, and the future land use would be designated as industrial.
So couldn't uh, couldn't everything inside of the? Especially the inner critical zone, couldn't it all be? That same way, even though the zoning would technically be still be residential? But if it ever was. Came up to be changed, like you said.
Well, I think the difference is you have subdivisions there, whereas these are just. Parcels.
Yeah, but doesn't. Doesn't it kind of open the door for? Like one, one lot. Or not one lot, but one little area has. Has this restriction or amendment. And then all these other yellow ones do not. Even though they are. Even closer to the runway. And in the inner critical zone, even though there are subdivision. Like if they even like, so. Think what I'm following is even if they were gray in this, in this slide. They could still be subdivisions with homes and all that, but. If it ever came up to where. You know, for some reason, the airport had this massive expansion for good reason, maybe. Those areas could be. You know, four thousand years from now, I don't know. But I don't know if it really makes any difference. You know, to change one that's further away when there's, this is the same debate we had with, with multiple things that have come up here is. If we change one, why aren't we changing all the other ones too? It's like we're picking on one of them, you know? And I don't know why that one would, would be different than the other, you know?
I think that part of it is because of the adjac- adjacent neighborhoods and what they're looking like now. But one point perhaps, um, we could ask. Fonda to address this very issue in our training next week to give us a few moments to talk about this. Um, and just what kinds of, of um legal issues would be involved with that, so.
Yeah, because the, the ones just to the west of it were residential. Last year. So.
That, that Robertson Hines was a unique situation because it was already a private street. With. Lots on it. And what was being asked was. To add two lots, but also bring the street up to public infrastructure standard, so it was. It was trying to make an existing situation. Improve an existing not ideal situation. Um, but again, the zoning was in place for it, so they weren't asking for a zone change. Uh, but they were trying, we were trying to get it so that the infrastructure was. Met the city requirements.
Now, I'm, I'm referring to the, the. Garage condo. Project.
Oh.
Before that.
Yeah.
Project started, that was residential.
It was mixed use residential, which is commercial district, yep.
But yeah, I would like to hear from Fonda. Next meeting.
Yeah, well, that can be part of our training.
So some of you have been through this training before and you know, um, sort of the general overview of what I'm going to talk about. So in that context, I mean, you're wanting me to talk. A little bit more about. Process and risks of changing zones, is that what you're looking for?
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Yes.
Or, or I think related to this discussion is. Changing the future land use map. Of a fully built out. Area, so changing. The future land use map of. Recently approved subdivisions that are in the inner critical zone to future land use and thus heavy commercial industrial.
We wanna be really careful.
Exactly.
And I guess you wanna be really careful on this conversation because you are, you are. You are narrowing down your request to specific parcels and asking me to provide. A legal opinion regarding that, and, and we wanna be really careful with that. This, this needs to maintain. Not just the training, but even this conversation of the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. Really needs to maintain its um. Its general. Um, nature for the purpose of. Future planning, so. So my comments will be according to that, and it looks like Miriam has something to say about that too.
Well, if I may, um, maybe just to put some guardrails on the conversation. You know, the future land use map, the comprehensive plan. Is really only intended to look out twenty years. So. When we're. When we're looking at established neighborhoods. Uh. Subdivisions that are built out. The likelihood of those. Changing drastically in character and use over the next twenty years. Are very slim. Um. And so the, really where we want to have careful understanding of, of different land uses from. In the future land use plan versus what's on the ground or what's zoned. Really targeted areas that, that have opportunity to be built up further, our redevelopment opportunities are info. Uh, areas, and so I, I will say that this conversation. You know, two, three years ago, when we had the airport updates, you know, we talked about. What? ITD recommends for the lateral and inner critical areas in terms of land use, and it is. You know, it is unfortunate that some of these areas were built out without that consideration and understanding of best practices around an airport. Um, but at the time, it felt like we've missed the boat. In a sense of changing what those land uses could be, and instead we focused in, in, um. On the areas that are vacant, are. Aren't built out to their. Um, what they could be, you know, so there's opportunity for change in the future.
Okay, let's move forward.
Okay. Uh. Moving south then. Um, again. The land use categories are low density residential. Medium density residential, high density residential. Uh, a lot of there, there have not been uh significant changes from. Uh, what the character area of future land use map was. Um, there are some changes in terms of if there is property that is. Say high density residential, we identified it in the future land use map as high density residential, so if you think of built out. Um, and the other one we did that for was Seasons at Sandpoint. The um. When it was a context area, it was context area five, I believe, which was. Um. Downtown. Uh, but as a land use, it is high density residential and. In the future, it will be high density residential, so that, that was a change, it's just. It's not a commercial. Um, property, it's very much a high density. Uh, residential area. So then the area really, um. That I thought the commission should um be talking about are those areas. Kind of on the periphery of. What is considered downtown. Um, currently, all the area that is both hatched. Um, and red and hatched and purple west of. Um. Fifth Avenue is. Considered context area five, so that is the highest density. Um, district that we have. Um. So look, but looking at it, if you look at the character of say the Granary District, um. That. Ha, you know, US two, Fifth Avenue. Is kind of a natural dividing line between what would be your. Urban core and your, what, what the purple color is identifying is more neighborhood. Um, mixed use, so it would be a slightly different, again, it's not a zoning district. But it's saying this is more of a transition area from a high intensity. Commercial district to a lower intensity commercially, it would still be mixed use. Um. But it would be a likely a lesser scale, and then the other area that just, um. We have hatched, still identifying it as. Um. The downtown as future uh land use is the area lo- north of Pine. Uh, between Pine and Church, and again, as you're coming in. Um, I actually wanted to. Um. You know, if you're coming in on Pine, that first block is all, you know, single family dwellings. Um, there are, a lot of them are offices, but they are existing structures that are. One to two stories. Um, and it's more, it, it is more of a transitional feel than as you get closer and closer to First Avenue. Um, so that, and then just those other hatched areas are just those areas on the periphery. Of downtown. Uh, in terms of. You'll see the south side of Pine Street is identified, um. As neighborhood mixed use, and that's currently identified as, it's currently zoned as mixed use residential, so it's a step down zoning district from. Um, the downtown, but it's just. Are those kind of buffer areas along Pine Street, and maybe it doesn't go through to, to church? Maybe it follows the alley. Um, but are those? Areas that we fully expect to build out in the full intensity of the core downtown? Or do we anticipate? The character of those areas and the land uses of those areas staying. Uh, more as they are as. You know, one, two, potentially three stories. Again, that won't be determined until we do the zoning code. But are those areas? More transitional than. Uh, the rest of downtown. So that's the. Area west of Fifth and the area in between Pine and Church are the areas that. Um. Raise those questions as well as. At the north end of downtown, that area, um. There's a hatched area between, is it Alder? And we don't have the streets on there, unfortunately. Um. But that's another area that just, it has um a mix of residential structures. As offices, some residences. Uh, it's more of a mixed use. Sm- lesser scale than e- than the downtown, or maybe even. Uh. The corridor mixed use. Area, which is the. The darker red, the brighter red is downtown, the darker red is that corridor mixed use.
Amy, the ones to the south of Pine Street, there's two little. Areas, those right now are commercial.
Yes.
Buildings, correct?
Yes.
That's Second Avenue Pizza. I think, and then the long one. And then that one is. Actually.
Those offices, isn't it? Like Pave is in there and some other things like that.
Arlo's. Isn't that where the restaurant is? Between Pine and Lake.
Yeah, it's right there on, on Second.
Second.
Yeah, so.
There's an office building in the la long. I think there's that office building with parking in front of it.
Because right now, those are just commercial uses right now, they're not being.
Right.
But the, so what you're saying is the potential.
Um, Miriam, if you wanna stop sharing, I'll just pull up, um. J S.
And, and for clarification while you're doing that, were you asking us to weigh in on this this evening, or are you asking us to contemplate this for? Future meetings?
If you have comments now, that, that's perfectly fine. Um, just trying to get, you know. Your initial. Your initial. Thoughts.
Got you.
But what is, was the downtown, does does downtown zoning allow residential?
Uh.
Yes.
Da- yeah, downtown is a full. Um, if you look at the land use category narrative. It would be um. See here.
Uh, I mean, I believe that it it. It's asking for first level, first floor, commercial retail.
Yeah.
Office, anything above that residential.
And that the blue area is representative of uh. The hospital.
Hospital and a couple other quasi's are in there. Not sure exactly what they, but the hospital complex is most of that.
Church hospital.
I. Not that it's critical, but I think that my.
So this. This is the air that this, these are those two blocks that were shaded. So it's where. That turns into pine, so. This area. Um, and then this was. So again, it's it's they're all mixed use districts. The future use would be, but it could be that. Um, the mix, the neighborhood mixed use may allow ground floor residential, whereas. The downtown very much is trying to keep that pedestrian oriented. Commercial ground floor. Space, so it's um. Look at actually.
In that zone there to the north of, well, kind of sandwiched in between. Pine and Church. Um, there's a current, there's at least two. Um, units currently under construction there. Are they residential all the way?
No, those are ground floor commercial.
Yeah, I was just curious. Got you.
The structure.
My first blush is that, and everybody else chime in here, eh is that the stuff to the north of, well, that the area I'm just talking about, that's that's between. Pine and Church. To me, that makes complete sense to be considered downtown. Then the area that's to the west of the curvy, eh you know, the the curve that's in there.
Mm hmm.
Um, to me, that looks more transitional and not that it's a hu- or the uh um. Mixed use corridor.
Mm hmm.
Um, that's just my first thoughts, but.
Well, it certainly would go in line with what's already on the.
Yeah.
North end. Southwest side. Along the highway there.
Um, Miriam, if you wanna go ahead and bring the map back up. So, but again, I mean, this is um, as you're aware, there is this downtown waterfront. Um. Design competition that's going to be occurring, they've been given it, you know, generally what is their area of focus. Um. Some of this discussion may occur through that process as well. Um. You know, and if if the thought is. You know, yes, the sun, the. The core downtown does extend all the way over to Boyer and it doesn't end at um Fifth Avenue. Um, no. That's fine. Um, but there are at least current with the current. Zoning for downtown, it's much more, you have to have ground floor. Use and you have to be two stories. Um, and you and. You know, again, all of that will be looked at as we move forward, but um. I guess. Being newer to the community, I look at. Uh, kind of natural dividing lines and to me. Fifth Avenue is very much a. Area of change. Particularly once the um couplet is put into place. Um, when there's one way, you know, for two blocks, the the north and southbound traffic will actually be separated. Uh.
Where's that happening at? Where is that occurring at?
Uh, that would be right on the bend. Um, so the southbound traffic would follow, starting at Cedar, it would follow the rail corridor going through. Um, the park, existing parking lots.
Hmm.
And the northbound traffic will follow the existing. Traffic pattern.
Okay.
So. Yeah. I guess. Uh. For, you know. Looking at this as kind of areas to think about moving forward.
Um, so does the low density um area along Boyer? That is between medium density and uh. Uh, mixed use corridor. All right, or neighborhood mixed use. Is that kind of a? Kind of an island there?
Oh, um, south of Cedar.
Yeah.
The Boyer that. That area.
Yeah, and then, yeah, those two blocks down there especially. Is, why were those remaining low density?
Um. Probably because they're mostly established and they're currently in um. Actually, the, we did change the one block at the corner of Boyer between Boyer, Pine and. Church that. That block is currently the north end showing single family or, yeah. Uh, what would be low density and we changed it to medium density. Um. But, yeah, we could consider medium density. Going north of there as well.
Just seems like Boyer is. Maybe that opportunity for the. You know, the mixed use corridor. In my opinion, since. There is some of that in that area anyway. On. The north and south end and then. Uh, one of the more recent things that we heard was moving into that and it's. It's it's further north. It seems like the low density, I don't know if we give, if we're on that, you know. How do we make more more housing units available? I don't know, those areas seem like. The more acceptable area than someplace that's further out, you know, like. You know, past division, even though there already are. Um. Yeah, I. I know, I know, like you said, a lot of those in there, right? And it's it's almost all, well, it is all single family right now. But it seems like not that if we, if this changed, it isn't, doesn't mean they're all gonna turn into. You know. High density housing overnight, but. At least the option would be there, since there is close proximity to quite a bit of higher density stuff.
And are are you saying a long Boyer, it's not residential or it's it's. Uh, medium density versus low density?
Well.
They are.
Well.
They built out neighborhoods.
Yeah, so I had. The first thought was our downtown area is actually fairly limited. And so where would? You know, if we're just like the topic earlier of, you know, the industrial area available. Our downtown. You know, commercial, high density is is pretty, pretty small comparative to all the other areas, so. If the downtown, you know, the bright red was going to migrate anywhere, I think those yellow areas on Boyer make the most sense. For a mixed use or a neighborhood, yeah, neighborhood mixed use or mixed use corridor. Cause for me, Boyer is like a bypass through parts of town to get from one end to the other. It is higher traffic.
My, and and I concur in terms of that being an area of higher density potentially. I don't concur that that really would be considered downtown. When we look at the different kinds of things, if we look at, if if we want downtown Sandpoint to remain a vibrant hub for entertainment and culture. A lot of these other things we've talked about with industrial and and and. And um affordable housing, those are things that Sandpoint doesn't have to answer. We wanna be part of the answer, but we don't have to be the only answer because Ponderay and Cootney and Dover will provide answers to some of that as well. But the downtown corridor of Sandpoint remaining the the hub for alt art, culture, entertainment. That's something that in my mind, we would want to work to preserve and 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 I don't see Boyer as ever being a part of that. I don't, I. Quite honestly, but I do see the area down there, like I said, between Pine Street and Church Street. Which is in that study zone as being. The downtown could migrate. To that area to where we would have the same sort of thing where we have ground floor. Up public use spaces, whatever they might be, and residential above.
I I I don't disagree that, you know, downtown. Is is what it is and it should remain that. I think. If we have more people living here than the topic of what we had last or one of our previous. More recent meetings about being able to walk and bike to um, you know, neighborhood. Retail, commercial type space that wasn't overtaking the neighborhood. I think Boyer fits into that. It's already. It already has that in in areas. I personally, I feel like the yellow in the, right in the middle of that. Is sandwiched between. Uh. You know, it looks like. A bar that got surrounded by a bunch of uh. That is more medium density residential. That yellow space, that's what you're talking about. Yeah. In there. Yeah, I I, right. I think single family there that. To me, it seems like the most, or the furthest from what the future is gonna be there. Um, or future demand.
I think that the uh, that fifth. Corridor there is gonna always be um such a major barrier that what we consider to be downtown won't cross it. But I agree that. Oh, and does this come in, did this come into play at all? Um. That when when we look at what we currently have there as that low density residential. Is some of the areas that we might consider where we see most of our historic homes. Did that come into the? The equation at all with with this map is. As as opposed to less historic homes?
Well, yeah, I mean, you have Sixth Avenue there, which is, does have a lot of. Eh I think that's an area that's been discussed as a potential historic residential historic district. Um. So again, I mean, that that's. That's the. Uh. Balance of protecting neighborhood character and. Creating more housing for. You know. More units. Will address some of the demand. Um. But I think you do have those historic neighborhoods that. If you encourage. Upzoning, you are more at risk of having teardowns and um. Houses being built that are sizably larger.
So maybe my, maybe my focus is. The good point on Sixth Avenue and, you know, the. The immediate area around it. I think maybe my focus is more of the Boyer itself, since it is. Um, I mean, I'm sure there's some historic quality right along Boyer, but. That would be what my focus would be more of like it, may, you know, it's not gonna turn into Fifth Avenue. Or, and I don't believe it'll turn into downtown either. I think I was more focused on the the same ability to build. Right on a busier street. And something other than just a single family home.
So by changing it to a medium density, we were giving those that flexibility.
Well, I think, I I I think if medium density means. Some retail component, which I don't think it does mean that.
No, that would be getting into your neighborhood mixed use.
Well, and the other thing too is that, let's not, I mean, I. This is land use, not zoning. And and um. Almost all of Sandpoint is is zoned in. Not land use, not what we're looking at here, but almost all of Sandpoint is currently zoned in such a fashion. That you could tear down a single family home and and build multifamily. That's the way the zoning currently is. That's not the way the land use currently is, but that is the way the zoning currently is.
Mm hmm.
Um, and the only exception to that is being the uh. Southeast section, the historic, the most historic homes, if you will, of Sandpoint.
Well, any place that's zoned RS is a little, but your RS, your residential, single family zone allows a thirty-five foot tall. Structure.
Is there any action item you're looking at from us at this time?
No action. Um, Miriam, is there anything else? Um. On the future land use. That we needed to touch on, I can't think of. You know, the other unique area we have and we have it currently is. That area in South Sandpoint between. Third and fourth. Um. That stretch is all currently zoned. Our multiple family because it's got several structures that have been. Um. You know, modified into multiple units. So I think that's why they put the zoning there. Uh, but we do. Have two new single family residences there that are forty feet tall. Uh, because that is what the zoning allows. So. Does it make sense to put? Um, medium density, a strip of medium density residential through the middle of the low density neighborhood. And that's the way it is currently. Um. So that we retain the way it was currently. We didn't change it.
I'm not hearing any strong opinions.
Yeah, I mean. I I don't have any problem with it.
Yeah.
So it's there.
Um. I think that's it. I mean, the the biggest, when you're looking at the map, the biggest change. Really is the public, quasi-public being called out as something other than. Um, residential or commercial.
Is that um, and getting away from land use and looking at zoning, um, is that, is that area that I was referring to earlier between Pine and Church? To the east of the curve, is that currently?
And that's currently all um downtown.
Okay.
And it's currently commercial A.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's not a change you're looking at anyway for, so. I'm content.
Great. So I think just in terms of my perspective here, um, it sounds like there's general support for our. Overall land use categories. Um, put that back up here on the screen. Um. Moving away from context areas, bringing in more traditional land use categories that are more descriptive. Um, and it sounds like there's still some work we need to do, maybe a closer look at some of these study areas. Um, for a later discussion.
And I would like to give you kudos, uh, yes, for changing the the names of these, cause I think they. Make it much more accessible to the public and and us as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Most definitely.
I agree.
So Amy, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and, um, I think. I think that might be it for this discussion item.
I think so.
I think so. So do we have any other questions or staff or one another at this point? Is our meeting same time next week?
Yes.
Same time.
Be a regular meeting time.
Okay. So with no further business. Before the commission, this meeting is now adjourned. At. Seven o'clock on the dot. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, Fonda. Bye.
I don't think she can see us when we wait five.
Bye, everybody.